I'd like to call the work session order for March 17, 2025. City Clerk, please read the roll call.
Let the record reflect that all members are present.
Thank you. We have two items on the agenda tonight. Like the chairman and council, the staff will be pausing every so often to answer any questions. First up is the 2025 Strategic Plan update for the Police Department to study and evaluate the creation of a real-time crime center. And Chief, give me one second. Economic development will follow with Wendy Bridges will present along with President and CEO at GPEC, Chris Camacho. Chief, you're up.
Great. Well, good evening, Mayor Pazillo, members of council, and Happy St. Patrick's Day.
Thank you.
I am Brian Nissett, the Police Chief for the Goodyear Police Department, and today we will be going over an action item that was placed in the FY 2025 Strategic Plan in regards to providing a safe and vibrant community. The goal stated in the strategic plan was to study and evaluate the creation of a real-time crime center here in the city of Goodyear. That task has been completed, and I am excited to share the findings with you here tonight.
My thing will move. One more time.
Maybe not. Okay, there we go. So first and foremost, what is a real-time crime center? Is it working? No? Okay. A centralized, first it's a centralized location. We'll just put all of them up there and I'll just go through. Per the Bureau of Justice Assistance, the BJA, which is housed in the Department of Justice, "A real-time crime center exists to provide law enforcement agencies with the ability to capitalize on a wide and expanding range of technologies for efficient and effective policing. The technologies available allow law enforcement agencies and officers to respond to crime more efficiently, more deliberately, with improved operational intelligence, with a proactive emphasis on officer, citizen, and community safety." It's also what I like to call an information hub. A recent article published on Police One dated August 2024 stated that "real-time crime centers have rapidly expanded across the United States, growing by a rate of over 148% in the past four years." For Goodyear PD, I believe this is the place where innovation, creativity, and technology meet that will help us match the growth that continues to happen every day in our ever-thriving city, allowing us to protect and serve this great community in the most efficient and effective way possible. For me, the most important question to ask when discussing any project is the why. There are a variety of reasons why real-time crime centers have been able to demonstrate their effectiveness. First, they have shown the ability to help reduce crime. A 2019 evaluation of decentralized real-time crime centers within Chicago PD showed a 3% to 7% decrease in both violent and property crimes after the centers had been installed. Improved clearance rates. A 2024 academic study in the Journal of Criminal Justice also found that during the same time the Chicago PD real-time crime centers were implemented, while a reduction of crime was observed, there was an increase of 5% in violent crimes being solved and an increase in 12% of property crimes being solved. A more recent evaluation of the Miami Police Department Real-Time Crime Center found a 66% higher likelihood of clearing cases of violent crime incidents compared to cases not supported by the real-time crime center. Decreased response times. According to available data, a real-time crime center can potentially save significant portions of response time, with studies showing several minutes on average, especially with the use of drones as first responders, otherwise known as DFR. And lastly, and most obviously, the more information a police officer has responding to a call, the safer the response can be for the officers and citizens alike. Having a fuller picture of what is happening in real time can help officers respond in a more strategic and tactical way as opposed to walking into an unknown situation. There we go. Okay, so as the, as the growth of the city of Goodyear has increased, so has the work of the Police Department. From 2000, in between 2024 and 2023, we saw a 10.3% increase in calls for service. Next. Of that, a 3.3% increase in Priority One calls for service. So these are calls that are happening right now. Somebody calls, they need the police immediately because something bad is happening, a crime is being occurring, or they need the police at this very moment. Lastly, in 2024, we saw 8.9%.
Going backwards.
An 8.9% increase in arrests in 2004 as opposed to 2023, which obviously, the more calls for service we respond to, the more likelihood that there's going to be an arrest associated with that. So let's talk about regionalization. There has been multiple discussions about regionalization or regionalizing a real-time crime center. And while I know and understand the benefits, which would include sharing space, personnel, and especially costs can be appealing, there can also be drawbacks to this philosophy as well. While we have great regional partnerships with all of the West Valley law enforcement agencies through the West Valley Law Enforcement Training Academy, the Southwest Family Advocacy Center, or the West Valley Incident, Violent Incident Response Team, the real-time crime center is in an area that regionalization can become difficult. But why? So let's talk about some of the drawbacks, which I believe are number one prioritization, number two infrastructure, and number three, time, distance, and proximity. Let me explain a little bit of that. If there are multiple incidents occurring at the same time at a regionalized crime center, which city gets the priority? That would be one question that I would have. How would you divvy up the resources? From an IT perspective, wherever the regional time center, real-time crime center is housed, the infrastructure they have is what Goodyear would have to utilize, even if it's not the standard of our own IT department, which could become problematic. And then, of course, the time, distance, and proximity that that center is away from the city. As the chief or for any of the police or city executives, if a major incident is happening in our city, I want to be able to walk into a room and see for myself what is happening. We, while I can foresee a regionalization of a fusion center, much like the ACTIC, the Counterterrorism Center, or the East Valley Fusion Center, after much discussion and research, Goodyear will be best served by its own standalone real-time crime center. I base this decision based off of the knowledge and expertise that I have developed throughout my career and the research conducted by our own Goodyear Police Department team. In December 2024, I traveled with our team to observe the operations of the real-time crime center for the Elk Grove Police Department in California, which also employs a drone-as-first-responder program. In addition, I have personally had the opportunity to either visit or work in real-time crime centers or fusion centers over the course of my career to include Scottsdale, Glendale, Phoenix, Albuquerque, the Boston Regional Intelligence Center, NYPD, the Michigan State Police Intelligence Operations Center, and the Arizona Counterterrorism Information Center. The fact is, the city of Goodyear is a perfect location to house a real-time crime center where our city and citizens will benefit from the advancement of technology in the law enforcement realm. Over the course of my career, an emphasis that has always been important to me is partnerships. While the center we are discussing would primarily be used to combat criminal activity in our city, it can be utilized for so much more. Think of this as the Goodyear Real-Time Intelligence and Tactical Center. That is why, in the course of this project, I met with Fire Chief Paul Luizzi and our Emergency Manager Brian Woodard with the idea of constructing the center within the Emergency Operations Center and co-locate it with our telecom, now known as our Emergency Communications Center. The possibilities of collaboration are literally endless with this type of technology at our fingertips. For the Fire Department, the value of the center can be utilized for emergency response and damage assessment, search and rescue operations, or hazardous material incidents. For parks and recreation, the tools in the center can be used for event management or assistance with incidents involving our park rangers. This really takes on an all-hazards approach, where this center isn't just utilized for our Police Department, for all of our departments, especially our public-facing departments within the city. It gives a more global approach to solving problems within the city. And again, going back to touching every public-facing So the question is, how do we get there? While the evaluation of this project dictates that we can and should do this, how do we get there? Based on the financial impact, my recommendation would be to accomplish this in two phases. Phase one, that would consist of building out the center in the Emergency Operations Center while acquiring a real-time crime center platform. There are multiple companies that have, that have one of these platforms. It's going to be up to us to select the correct platform and essentially through a state contract and/or RFP, but we're going to have to select the platform. And then we're going to need to obtain the hardware, a video wall, computers, desks, TVs, monitors, radios, as well as other software that will make the real-time crime center work. There are multiple softwares out there, one in specific. It basically takes all of the data coming from video streams that are being sent into the real-time crime center. We'll just say, for example, we're looking for a red pickup truck that the suspect is driving. Using the AI, it will remove every vehicle from the video that is not a red pickup truck. That is, that is the type of technology that could be at our fingerprint, at our fingertip to, to solve crime. And to start with phase one, personnel. We're looking for one officer, one tactical dispatcher, one crime analyst, and then a system engineer as requested by IT. Phase one also includes the complete integration into the grid of our CAD and RMS systems. That's our Record Management System, our flock camera system, as well as city-controlled cameras at intersections and city-owned buildings. Where I think that we would be able to see an immediate impact is the solvability of just what we're seeing with our flock camera system. Information captured from the past year, that's March to March, indicates that we had over 1,240 flock hits of just the information that we entered into our system, not from the other agencies. If you take all the agencies in NCIC and, and look at the hits, we're around 11,000, a little bit more, 11,000 hits per, during that timeframe. The vehicles that are entered by our own detectives and officers were 12, a little over 1,200. We've had 12 arrests out of those, out of those hits, which is, for the math majors in the room, a little less than 1% solvability rate. The flock hits could be on stolen vehicles, missing persons, or any vehicle that was used in the commission of a crime. Should we have a real-time crime center, staff could immediately locate the vehicles on the cameras within the center and begin giving real-time intelligence and direction to responding officers to effect an arrest. As of today, officers receive a notification of the hit, and then they must manually circulate the area in hopes that they can re-acquire or locate the vehicle. Each real-time crime center platform that we're looking at also allows for the migration of security systems that are owned by privately-owned businesses or citizens, should they wish to participate in the program. Think of it as a virtual block watch. Moving on from phase one, we would look at phase two. This would be additional hardware, desk, and radios. We would look to implement the drone-as-first-responder program. And essentially, that will enhance our eyes on the scene quicker, allowing officers more information about what is occurring at the scene. Many cities with this program have also used, used it to decrease their response time on calls for service. Lastly, we would be looking for additional personnel in phase two, and that would be two additional tactical dispatchers, one crime analyst, and one civilian supervisor. Mayor Pazillo, members of council, as technology continues to advance and in planning for the future growth and development of our city, I believe the creation of our own real-time crime center to be at the forefront of our policing strategy for years to come. There is not only academic research and data to prove the efficacy of this type of asset to a city, but also to the community by providing victims a better response to in-progress incidents, as well as better results in clearing cases that might otherwise have gone unsolved. It's my recommendation for your consideration to move forward with phase one of creating the grid center to allow for budgetary discussions for the upcoming fiscal year 2026 budget.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Great, great presentation, Chief. Questions?
Questions? Great presentation. Yeah, I went toured the Glendale one. It was great. Definitely the benefit of it. Does phase one include, how long do we store, do we store the data for, do we need to, do we need to get a server, or do we need other, other ways to keep it in the cloud, or how do we, how long do we keep that for?
Yeah, so we would follow the record retentions as allowed by statute. Right now, I know that we just, one of the strategic objectives for FY 24, when I came in, was in reference to the intersection cameras and how we were accomplishing that task. I believe that we decided in that regard that we were holding the information for 180 days, but that I would defer to.
I believe that the day-to-day is more transitory. I believe 72 hours, I could be wrong, but once it's pulled for a police investigation, then it goes to that longer period of time.
I couldn't remember. Thank you. I was trying to think if we're seeing more, doing more with it. We need more storage capacity or things like that. So, and then, yeah. Yeah, I know, I'm looking, this will be good for our city. I think it'll be good for our residents, and I saw, I see the benefit of it. So, looking forward to phase one. Thank you. I'm in support.
Appreciate it. Being the new person here, well, one of. One of two. One of two, yeah. I haven't had the opportunity to tour other real-time crime centers. I, just kind of the generalized thing, I'm kind of playing catch-up here. So, I kind of have a few questions. Apologies on that. Overall, just prefacing this, I, I really love the idea. I support the idea. I want to get you guys the tools that you need for our community. But kind of the primary macro-level function of a real-time crime center, what does the inside look like? What are you pulling everywhere and implementing and putting in a process? Just kind of from the macro outsider view?
Yes. Great question, Mayor Pazillo and Councilmember Terry. So essentially, the real-time crime center is able to pull in any data that's, that's connected with it. So for example, in our crime center that we are trying to build, we would have migration -- So for example, in our crime center that we are trying to build, we would have migration of all of our city cameras, so every intersection in our city has cameras that we would be able to pull data or video through, as well as any of the city-owned buildings. Now, most of the real-time crime centers also allow for private citizens and/or businesses to partner. So essentially, imagine there's a, we'll just say an armed robbery at Circle K. If we have a partnership with that Circle K, the operators or the tactical dispatchers would be able to access that camera footage immediately from that Circle K and be able to start providing real-time updates to the responding officers who are on their way to the scene. The whole idea is of a real-time crime center is that you're trying to get information immediately to the responding resources so that they know what they're dealing with. I've seen it in practice when I was at Albuquerque PD, where they had, I forget the name of the Circle K's that they had there, but their convenience store. And so, there was an armed robbery, immediately the dispatcher was able to pull up the video and say, "The suspect is running, you know, northbound, and they're wearing these clothes." And then they also have the view of, basically, the global view of everything. The real-time crime center platform allows for the real-time crime center and the folks in there to see where all the resources are. And so they can say, "Hey, you know, this car right here, that's coming southbound on Litchfield Road. The suspect is running right towards your direction, and this is what they're wearing." So that is ultimately the, I would say, the higher level of what we're trying to do. There's also, you know, there's more strategic ways that we can use the real-time crime center as well, but that would be the general overview.
Perfect. So it's primarily cameras, you mentioned government-owned or private.
Partnerships.
Basically, private owners would have to give permission for their cameras, and they could do that. And then we would be able to tap into that if a situation, do we need additional approval to do that? I know it's probably good that RORC's in between us as well, I don't know kind of how that operates.
So to answer your question, most jurisdictions that have this type of partnership with the community or with business partners, there's a log that anytime, let's say, we'll just go back to a Circle K incident, anytime that we access a camera for a Circle K, we would have to denote the call for service or the incident number, we would have to denote what the reason was for us accessing that information. As well, you know, speaking about Phase Two, and we'll just say the drone-as-first-responder program, I know that there are multiple jurisdictions that will actually post or have accessibility to the community online for any drone deployments, and what the incident number was, what the route was that the drone took. And so, it's just being transparent with the community for the use of this system.
And then, I guess another question I would have is, on our end, from a network security standpoint, who, like, in a generalized sense, who has access on our end and just kind of the vulnerabilities there? I want to make sure we're looking at as well, any care that's been in there. I guess there are training involved, I'm sure, but is, are there a limited number of employees within your department, sworn officers within your department that would have access to the data from the real-time crime center?
So Mayor Pizzillo and Councilmember Terry, I would say yes, there, you know, the whole primary goal of this is for the accessibility to be in the real-time crime center. And so, you know, I can also defer to Director Faison from IT, and she can help answer that question as well, from the IT standpoint.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure we're, have everybody covered. I'm new to this, so I.
We've been working in concert together on this project.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and Councilmember Terry. Yes, we would have segregated networks so that there wouldn't be that, over hours, and it would have separate security access for all PD staff, and chief would have access as to whom had that ability.
Okay, perfect. I appreciate that. On the logistical side, when it comes to dispatch and dispatch support, within our current dispatch system software, do we have the direct capabilities now to integrate the RTC, or Real-Time Crime Center? Is that a separate thing, or does our current dispatch system or the software that we use require an update with this?
So Mayor Pizzillo, Councilmember Terry, if I'm understanding your question correctly, right now, we don't have the platform, the Real-Time Crime Center platform. So at this moment, our dispatchers, they do not have the accessibility to all the things that we're talking about with the implementation of this project.
Okay, so we're going to need a full update of what our 911 dispatchers are using as well, or is that completely separate?
Yeah, so to answer, well, I'll just answer, to answer.
And again, I appreciate you putting up with me.
To answer this question, what is being seen by the staff or the employees in the real-time crime center won't necessarily, the dispatchers in their emergency communications center won't be seeing that or won't have access. It will be a separate room that all of the technology will be in. So the dispatchers will still be getting all of the information from the caller and will be putting that information out, but the actual, what is being seen by the tactical dispatcher in the real-time crime center, that's going to be completely separate than what is actually being broadcast over the radio from the call system, and then I will defer to.
Mayor and Council, thank you. Yes, that is absolutely correct. The 911 dispatching group would be independent of the real-time crime center, and further, they would need connectors. So that's part of the ask for Phase One, is that we would be purchasing the things that we would need to connect all of the data from these different cameras to our existing systems.
Okay, I appreciate that. Are we looking to, so we need to update our software, we're looking to purchase, I assume the software, not necessarily lease any capabilities, we're looking to own and have full control of whatever we're doing. And then, I saw on the personnel side, Phase One, one officer, one tactical dispatcher, one crime analyst. What is the optimal personnel requirement for like full capability, like, are we looking 24/7 because of, 24/7 is that?
That is not 24/7. So eventually, we would.
So eventually, what is?
Eventually, we would like, I would say that the combination of Phase One and Phase Two would be a full shift. Eventually, we, you know, after proof of concept and just displaying to everyone that this is indeed working, as we are saying it will work, which I have no doubt that it will, just watching and seeing it for my own eyes in multiple places, eventually, we would look to continue to get staffing through supplementals as the fiscal years go along. But right now, I mean, all in all, I would say that Phase One and Phase Two, you know, Phase One's probably, I'm speculating, would be about an 18-month phase, and then Phase Two, we're probably looking at another 18 months.
And are we budgeting for, I assume budgeting for this, or at least in the process for that, to hopefully be able to make that happen?
If there's consensus from council tonight to move forward with Phase One, we will get her done.
No, I appreciate, and I appreciate, like, again, everyone up here putting up with me. I'm just new to this. I came here from the high school district where we, over the last several years, implemented a lot of advanced security measures and protocols. One of them included cameras, our own dispatch system. I know with the city of Buckeye, our high school district had incidents where they were able to tap in when a critical incident happened in real time. Is that something, we have the capability now, or are we looking at ensuring we have that happen? Because, you know, when these critical incidents are happening, there's no site I can think of, other than a school where that real-time info pinpoint accuracy is needed at a faster pace.
So Mayor Pizzillo and Councilmember Terry, yes, that is another avenue that the real-time crime center would be looking to absorb, especially with the four high schools that we will have in Goodyear.
Okay. And then, I guess my last one, you brought up the drone, the DFR, that's Drone Response?
Drone-as-first-responder.
Okay, Drone-as-first-responder. How does that kind of work in process or in practice?
Great question. So, you know, we're talking about high-tech at its finest, and, you know, I mean, these are all really great questions, and, you know, I know this is a big investment for our city, and so I don't mind answering any question because everybody at the table should feel comfortable walking away, knowing exactly what these, all these, you know, this technology does. The Drone-as-first-responder, there's basically, well, there's two, I would say, main companies out there. One has a drone that will go up. The drone flies at about 45 miles per hour-ish, and so it can go up, it has about a flight time of 45 minutes. It will be up for enough time for patrol to respond. It comes back to home base, it's kind of like a NASCAR pit stop. Robot takes the battery out, puts a new one in, and it's back up into the air. That's one of the ways that this particular drone works. The other company, it uses more of a Beehive-type approach, where a drone will go up, it has about a 20-minute flight time. As the battery's powering down, and it, you can tell that it's ready to come back to home base. The next one will go up, it will, again, keep eyes above, and they just keep rotating. It takes about 20, that one takes about 20 minutes for the battery to charge, and so, but ultimately, either company, the drone, has a zoom capability up to a mile away. It's like 5K HD, you can read license plates from a mile away if you need to, and so.
So the idea is to be able to get a drone in the air over the incident, or whatever it may be, even before the officers get there, if that's, a lot of times, especially with how long north-south our city is, understandable, okay.
That would definitely be the optimum.
And then last one, I promise, surrounding cities here in the valley, I assume we are not the first to invest in real-time crime center, are, like, so I will ask the question at the most basic level, are there other cities that already have some in practice that are in the process of maybe investing in one? And just kind of what have the results, or at least word of mouth been from the officers in those communities?
Mayor Pizzillo, Councilmember Terry, that is a great question again.
Well, hold on, chief. I think a lot of us here, Trey has had a chance to visit, Glendale has one, real-time on how it all works. I think there'd be some advantage for somebody to set up for Councilmember Beckles.
Appreciate that.
And Terry, to go to the actual crime center, because it'll take you from the start to finish all the questions you're asking, and they have one up and running, and I know, I've been there, I think Wally's been there, I think you've been there, so.
All these questions were just a way of hopefully getting an invite.
Well, no.
You have your invite.
And you're going to get an invite from the manager.
We'll take care of it.
You good? The invite will answer most of those questions.
No, I'm good. I appreciate, again, entertaining my questions, and that's all I got.
Okay, Councilmember Gillis, you're up.
Yeah, go to, can you hear me? Go to Glendale. I can't say enough about it, Benita and Trey both, because you will see everything, and they are amazing. As you know, I gave you the report that I did over two years ago, and, pardon me?
Nothing, go ahead.
Okay. I gave you the report I did over two years ago, so you know I'm in complete 100% agreeance with this. I recommended this two years ago. I absolutely think that it's something that we need here. What I saw, I was one of the first ones that saw it in Glendale, and it was amazing. It's amazing. Trey, when you go, you will be amazed. You see everything, you just see everything. My main thing was, when I saw it, is I was concerned about the officers, and it obviously, I think, would help officer safety as well, and limiting maybe catastrophic things that would normally, officers would walk into, that they would not because of this. And so that was the thing that most impressed me. So I am 100% on board, but I would like to know, I have a couple of questions, I wanted to know, did I miss the cost of this, the total cost, or what the cost would be for Phase One and Phase Two, because obviously, we need to know that.
Yes.
That was not part of the presentation, but we will make sure that if the council wants this, Phase One, we will get it in the budget. And it's the personnel cost plus the TI improvements needed for the.
Don't we need to know the cost, though, to adopt this?
We can give you, yes.
Do you have a rough estimate?
Jared? I'd like to know what I'm voting on. Yeah, I don't have it at my fingertips, but Jared has something.
We're not voting here.
We're not voting, but I'm just stating, I'd like to know the cost before I say, "Yes, I think this is a good idea."
Thank you. Mayor Pizzillo?
Let's listen to his guy.
Councilmember Gillis, the estimate we have right now for the ongoing portion is about $1.4 million, and we're working on that. Big, about a third of that is actually the software costs, and then we have the personnel as well. We do have a CIP project that we're working out, it's going to be a little over $500,000, but we're still working on the details of that to include in the recommended budget.
So 1.4 plus the $500,000?
Correct. The operating costs are.
The $500,000 is one time.
One time.
Correct.
Okay, and so is the 1.4 split between Phase One and Phase Two, is that per phase?
That is Phase One.
Phase One. So what is Phase Two?
We don't have a Phase Two cost because we didn't have that as part of the '26 budget, but we can get that number for you.
Yeah, I would like to know that. But Phase One would be 1.4, and then $500,000 for the first time, one-time cost. That would come at the same time.
It would come in my recommended budget, if the council supports this, Phase One tonight.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Okay, so that sounds good, Brian. I think chief has it. That sounds great. That sounds, I'm all for it, 100%, 100%, I was for it two years ago. I think it's a great thing and be great for our city.
Thank you.
Benita, I'll work this way.
Yes, this very comprehensive program sounds like a wonderful asset for the city. My only question, we talked about crime, but does this also cover, like, those terrible car accidents that we see on the city streets?
Mayor Pizzillo and Councilmember Beckles, yes, any response that we have, we would be able to use the Real-Time Crime Center for that. You know, one of the things that I was most impressed with when I did a site visit in Albuquerque, this was several years ago, but their metric, or what they were most, what they wanted to do was to get information out to responding units within 60 seconds of any call happening. And so, you know, I just think, again, it's giving, it gives the first responders a broader and fuller picture of what they're walking into, so that they, you know, they can strategize better how they want to respond to that call, and they can do it more tactically, so. But yes, it would also include accidents, because we, as well as the fire department, respond to those as well. And just getting any type of information that we can before we actually arrive is always going to be more beneficial.
Okay, thank you. I'm very supportive.
Laura, go ahead.
All right, well, this is something we've been talking about for a while, and Well, this is something we've been talking about for a while and, and I was realizing as during the discussion that there's probably a number of things on our strategic plan that we, as a group, have been talking about for a while, but then there's Benita and Trey. And maybe we could be more proactive and as things are coming up to offer them the tours or bring them up to date, just to help them to be at a better advantage, you know, for the, the discussion. And I'm gonna, I want to probe the regionalization question a little bit more because initially when we came up to the idea, that was a factor, is to say, could we explore the regionalization? I guess one would be pure geography. We're about seven miles wide, so anybody who does bad things is going to go north, east, and west in a quick hurry. And so how do you have continuity when they can get out of your city in a pretty quick time? And I would say, when you look at the Glendale, the Glendale Real Crime Center, I, I would say your disadvantages, the prioritization, the time and distance is, is definitely a factor. But we have neighbors, Avondale, Buckeye, who we often share criminal activity with. Did we explore that as an option? So could you delve into that a little bit more?
Sure. Mayor Pizzillo and Councilmember Keno. So, yes, throughout this process, I've been talking with all of our regional law enforcement partners. Right now, as it is, you know, the relationship specifically in the Southwest Valley between Buckeye PD and Avondale PD, I just had coffee this morning with Chief Espinoza from Avondale. So we have ongoing discussions. Right now, Avondale, Avondale is looking towards their own partnership that they're working with Glendale. And Buckeye PD is, we, we really haven't gotten too far with that. Not to say that they wouldn't be, that they wouldn't want to, but right now, that is, that's just kind of where we are with our, with our neighbors, if you will.
Okay.
So, yeah.
So with the question of people having the ability because of I-10 and in future SR-30 to get out of our city really quickly, how does the continuity happen once of where they are, what they're doing, once they leave our city boundaries?
Yeah, so Mayor Pizzillo and Councilmember Keno, that's, I mean, that's really occurring right now as we speak. You know, we, we do have great partnerships and so, you know, anytime that we actually do have a suspect leaving our city that we have actual physical eyes on, we're always in contact with either Buckeye PD if they're heading west, Avondale PD if they're heading east, DPS if they're jumping in on the I-10. So, I mean, just recently, we, we had a suspect that we had a case on. They went, were on the I-10. We ended up catching them at the 60 and almost Gilbert Road. We had constant connectivity with all of our law enforcement partners, all the way east to include the Phoenix Police Department Air Unit assisting us with, with the apprehension.
Okay, so you're doing it anyway and, and it, okay.
Yes.
One of the things that Glendale said is that they also involved community, getting community meetings and community input. Because the fact is, when you have cameras at intersections, it encompasses where people live or, and such. Is that a part of the plan to involve the community in any kind of discussions?
Mayor Pizzillo and Councilmember Keno, my idea was, once we got approval, to move forward. On the one slide, I talked about having this virtual block watch concept. I think that's really where we can leverage having community meetings and bringing our community into the fold for those who want to participate and just educating those that may, might not want to participate, but still giving them the education of what, what the center does and what it doesn't do. We're not just linking into cameras and, you know, just looking at things for no reason. There's, there's always going to be a reason and it's always going to be documented for, you know, for full transparency.
I, I think public education will be helpful. I mean, certainly even with the flock cameras, with, with, you know, everything that we're doing that brings technology to a new level, you know, that gets interpreted differently by different individuals, but certainly is a very effective tool. And Goodyear has always been very proactive in crime solving and being, and not just saying, oh, well, they're gone. We're, we're very persistent and I think that's a reputation that we want to continue to do. Any grants available for any of this?
Mayor Pizzillo and Councilmember Keno, we are constantly looking for grant funding and if we can secure any of that, we definitely would seek to, seek to do that for either Phase One or Phase Two.
All right. My last question. I know that one, another big project that we've talked about for public safety would, and considering regionalization as well, is a training center. So how does this project compare to that? Do you have a priority?
I, we will be bringing that back to council for further discussion as to what that might look like. I believe we're coming back on the 24th in executive session on that particular one.
Okay, very good. Because a lot of money out there to be spent. We just had that integrated water plan, a lot of money, you know, needs to be invested in a lot of different important infrastructure and certainly this is infrastructure too. Thank you.
And we are seeking our partners with the regional training center and we do have the bonding capacity there. So working to stretch those dollars to, you know, and ensure we're being conservative and, and getting things that we need.
Great, thank you.
Before you, Laura, let's try Wally and then you and then Vicky.
Well, I'm definitely in favor of it. And if I understand right, I thought Buckeye had already started to build their real crime center, Chief. I read something somewhere where that they had either broken ground or that they were pursuing it. So I know, I mean, I think I know, I may not know. I don't know what I don't know. But it seems to me that they're, they're already doing it and I was very concerned that we're not doing it because everybody was so hot to trot last year to get this thing going. But this really is public safety at its best and this is what we need to do for this city. I'm assuming all of the cameras will be at the larger intersection. They're not going to infringe in the neighborhoods because we don't have any, we don't really have traffic lights and this is basically where the cameras are. Am I correct? Or at least that, that was the impression I got for Glendale.
Mayor Pizzillo, Vice Mayor Campbell, I would defer to Director Sinto on that, but I'm fairly confident that there, that the cameras are at all of the lighted intersections.
Right, that's right. Where, where there's traffic lights, anyway.
Mayor, Councilmember? Yes, I can confirm the, at the intersections where we have the point zoom cameras, those are the ones that they would have access to.
Okay. I know that those cameras don't infringe into their homes. They don't look in their windows. They do look in their cars as they're underneath them. And so we're also used to it. I think once we explain to the citizens what we're doing, they're not, they're going to feel maybe a more sense of security, quite frankly. So I'm anxious for us to go. I appreciate having the opportunity for those of us that didn't get to see the Glendale Real-Time Center first, that we were able to go and actually see it in progress. And it's, it is a wonderful tool for not only police but fire as well. So I'm anxious for us to get going. I know it's going to take years to do. It's not something that's going to happen overnight, although I would certainly hope that once we start moving on this, we stay steady and get it built so that we can get it up and running. It's really critical for us.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mayor.
Laura, did you have something?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to clarify, I missed Stoke Polk a few minutes ago. I looked at the records retention schedules. There are 14 days for the general traffic cameras under the Arizona Library's record retention schedule. That's what we adopted in our traffic camera policy as well. So it's 14 days, not 72 hours. If it's pulled down for law enforcement purposes, there's different retention schedules based on the type of the crime, but I apologize.
Okay, so just a correction there.
Yeah. Just a correction, thank you.
Yeah, I have one question. What is the CAD system that we're working off of right now?
Mayor Pizzillo, Councilmember Gillis, so right now, we have Tyler New World that we're, we're currently utilizing.
Okay, so we're going to get a new system when we do this? We're going to upgrade? Is that part of the...
So Mayor Pizzillo, Councilwoman Gillis, we're actively looking at that as a CIP item, but this would be different than the Real-Time Crime Center platform. Initially, we would integrate what we currently have into, into the platform.
Right.
Eventually, down the road, we would like to transition to a different CAD RMS system, but that would be, that would be down the road as a CIP item.
Okay, so my, my, my worry is, is that we're working on a subpar system when we, when we put this kind of money into this. So do we need to update that first before we do this? I mean, can we rely on this? Is it steady, the system you've got now?
And so Mayor Pizzillo and Councilwoman Gillis, yes, what we have right now, it definitely will suffice. It's not as robust as some of the other CAD RMS systems that are out there currently, but it's, it's the conglomeration of data that comes into the platform and, and that gives us stability to still see everything in that real-time realm that, that we're looking at for this project.
Would it be beneficial, just a question, would it be beneficial to include that, to do it all at the same time? How much more money is that to do something like that? Pardon me?
I said, what are you talking about? This is not on this and I don't know what a CAD system is. I don't, I don't understand this conversation.
Well, you can have your time with him next. That's why...
No, I'm just asking.
Well, since I've got the floor right now, can I finish what I'm talking about?
Certainly.
So do you want to explain that to her so she understands?
Mayor Pizzillo, Vice Mayor Campbell, CAD system is a computer aided dispatch system and RMS is a records management system. So those are essentially what, what we use to dispatch officers to the scene and then the backend of the records management that holds our reports, that holds our criminal database and offenders and that we use for prosecution.
So that does have to do with what we're talking about, correct?
It does, towards, you know, the integration of it. We need to find the software for the, or GRIT, I want to start calling it GRIT, and get that implemented and then we can evaluate the need for upgrading at that point.
My, my concern is for the cost overall, since that's what we're talking about tonight.
The cost to update that the Tyler system will be significant.
Okay.
And is there a need, my question would be, is there a need to update it? Until we get the software-
That's what I'm asking.
-in the GRIT, we don't have that information until we get the GRIT up, a real-time crime center, get that software running. And then we can determine, is there a need to do that? And if there is, we will explore that and what, you know, what steps we need to take.
And we wouldn't have problems getting the, the extra money for that? That's what you're saying? We would be able to find that?
We'll, we'll work. If that's council's direction, we would work to, to figure that out.
Okay, because that's what I'm concerned about, is the cost. Okay, that's great. Thank you.
Well, you know, you've got great discussion all the way around. I think you've got a plan to kind of move forward on there. The only thing I ask is if you can get me a Gantt chart of what you think this process wants to start, to finish for Phase One, the time, and each step along the ways, what you expect to accomplish on that, that would be very, very helpful. Okay? I know we have one-on-ones coming among all of us and a lot of this numbers is going to be explained to us at that point. And we still have some more voting when it comes to the budget, when we all get together to do that. So hopefully you'll be really precise on all of those pieces, your requests and all the department head directors will be precise on their request on what they're asking for in the money. And with that, I appreciate it. It's a great presentation and it's something that we need. I think some of the biggest concerns out there, and I don't think we have a whole lot in our neighborhood, because I know with Glendale, the concern was whether some of those cameras would be able to look into somebody's backyard. Because at some of those intersections, you've got homes that are really close to that. So that's going to be one of the concerns that where we set that. I don't think we have that much of it where we are, where you see the lights. Now, there's some on Bullard up towards Indian School that you might want to be careful with because there's a lot of homes around there that rate up against those. So again, I know that was some of the concerns they had with that. So with that, thank you, Chief, and we're ready. Does anybody want to take like a five-minute break before we bring the second one?
Yeah.
About five minutes and then we'll bring the second one up. Thank you, Chief. Ready? Go ahead.
Dee Bridges, I'm the Economic Development Director for the City of Goodyear. This evening, the item before you is an annual update from Greater Phoenix Economic Council.
Can you pull that just a little closer, your microphone there?
How's that? Is that better?
That's a little better.
All right. Tonight's item before you is an update, an annual update from the Greater Phoenix Economic Council, also known as GPEC. The City of Goodyear has been a longtime member of GPEC and we work with them for business attraction and they have been a tremendous partner for us in attracting some companies. Most recently, we were able to attract GTI fabrication, which is a manufacturer of battery components, battery storage components. And you may also know the names of Romac and Meyer Burger. They were also projects that came to us through GPEC. So we've had a very fruitful partnership with them over the years. And to give you the annual update now, I will hand it over to Mr. Chris Camacho, the CEO and President of GPEC.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council. And just before I begin, I'd like to acknowledge Wendy and her team. We have incredible partnership and working together to respond to the companies that are evaluating the metro Phoenix region. So we operate by representing the 22 public districts, including Maricopa County, Pinau County, and the 20 cities that reside within those jurisdictions. So I will be brief tonight. Tim Borsette is here, he's our Head of Government Affairs, and he promised me Rudy's after this. So I will be, you know, excited about that. But between now and then, I do want to cover a little bit about Greater Phoenix Economic Council, some of the work we've been doing over the last year. And feel free to interrupt and ask questions or give comments along the way. We'll make this very informal. But I was sharing with Wendy, this is, this is year 17 for me at GPEC, so I've, I think I've been through the worst of it back in 2008, '09, and '10, '11, that were major recovery years. And part of the whole premise of why we exist and how we continue to organize the market was to diversify the economic base away from simply housing and, and support retail, but really drive jobs that were going to create disposable incomes that leads to wealth and certainly leads to new tax revenue for our jurisdiction. So what I'm going to cover today very briefly, I've got a short slide deck just so I can draw your eyes to a few items here. But the organization is really structured. We created this neat design just to try to help me explain the depth of what we do. But at our core, I spent a lot of time, and this is why I'm so exhausted on Monday, is with the legislature. So we talk a lot about the region's competitive, they're amazing, as Tim will tell you, they're amazing individuals to work with. But we're an apolitical organization. We share the feedback from our clients, whether it's advanced manufacturers, office users, tech users, outside venture capital firms. We share a lot of the feedback that we garner from these industry leaders with the legislature and with our mayors and councils, talking about why are these industries having success in Arizona, or why are they selecting other places? I'm happy to go as deep as you want in that regard. But we don't get involved in politics. We do get involved in economic policy that we think will advance the region's competitive position. We're well-known for our traction work, so I'll, I'll share this snippet briefly. But a lot of the time, companies, just about all the time, when companies are evaluating the market, they don't know the difference between Phoenix and Goodyear and Glendale as much as you want them to, because we know Goodyear is an incredible community. However, they evaluate the market from a trade area standpoint. So when, when they look at, in some cases, they just think Arizona, Phoenix, metro Phoenix's entirety, the state of Arizona. So we're often competing with other regions for that job producer. I wish it was as simple as we just handed them off to our cities and these companies decided to locate in our communities. We have to go through a pretty extensive due diligence process on cost, on tax, on labor supply, infrastructure analyses, utilities, to help companies understand what it's like to operate here. So we do the attraction work, which I'll touch on here in a second. We do the branding work, which you're going to see more work in that regard. We still think we're one of the best-kept stories of the country, so we're going to be pushing out a new brand platform coming in the next 90 days. And that's about national media, earned media, paid media, advertising that we'll be doing to help celebrate the success stories that have occurred with industry and public sector partners in the region. Innovation, we support a number of assets of innovation, including applied research centers in the valley, which I can talk about, and then galvanizing and supporting the startup ecosystem. So those are the main things that we work on. We're a 501(c)(3) organization. We also garner about 80% of our revenue. So GPEC's financial support comes from 230 private sector companies that invest in GPEC. That enables each city to gain leverage on their public investment by having the private sector at the table. And so we think that's a really healthy model where we're not fully relying on cities to fund GPEC. We're able to leverage again the private sector resources that exist in the market. If we weren't successful, both the public and private sectors would not invest in what we do. So we've been around since 1989. As you can see here, 1,000 projects have landed in the valley with our support, almost 190,000 jobs and a lot of capital investment. Going on to the next slide here. These are all the things we do, not fully comprehensive, but the main part is when companies, we either find them or they come to us, a lot of the work is supporting their due diligence process. So we're going pretty deep technically on a variety of questions that the companies would have on the market, and we're comparing ourselves to other regions in which they evaluate as well. So a quick business development update, that's again, one of the primary things we do. We have a charter set forth by our board of set metrics that we have to adhere to. So that's our kind of performance scorecard. Any given year, we'll have about 250 to 270 companies evaluating the market, about 15 to 17% of them convert to new projects. You can see here, we're tracking right at goal with where we need to be for qualified prospects. We're a little bit down from where we were a year ago, but we're a little bit up on the international front. You'll see that international activity is up pretty substantially over the last several years. We've landed 27 new companies to the valley, over $1 billion new investment. That does not include the recent project with Mayo Clinic, the $1.9 billion project that expanded from Rochester, nor the TSMC project, which is the one that keeps giving. It's a once-in-a-generation type project for our state. They've now, now, they now have announced six fabs, two advanced packaging facilities, and an R&amp;D facility. We only count, for all of you to know, we only count the first phase of these projects. So even though there's $100 billion of new investment in our numbers, you will only see their first phase of investment that they made. If you rewind the clock quickly, and I'll just be brief on this for everyone's edification tonight, is when I started at GPEC, our average wage per, wage created for each new company on average was about $42,000. So the types of quality of companies and jobs being created, as you see there, the average high-wage salary is now $97,000. So this is really about a targeted approach of bringing high-wage valued industries into the valley. And as a requisite support, they create high-wage jobs, which they spend money now in your communities in a more significant way. So you can see the pipeline remains healthy. There's, there's been 50 million square feet of new industrial space added over the last year in the metro region. Our pipeline will yield 27,000 jobs, 180 active projects right now. And so again, we're seven, now eight months through our fiscal year, and so we'll have about another quarter of, of performance before we end in June. The composition of our projects, you can see between light and advanced manufacturing, it's still about 75% of our pipeline, still extraordinarily healthy, advanced technology projects from all around the world are evaluating metro Phoenix. And the GTI examples, you know, a great example of that, hundreds of jobs being created, there's future expansions planned as well for the, for the valley. And the one uptick we are seeing for the first time is office is coming back. I know with Globe and other office assets being considered here in this community and out west, we're finally seeing office tick back up. Now, it's a slow trickle. It's not like what we saw pre-COVID. But I will tell you, we are seeing more and more companies evaluate full return to office. And I do expect that to happen to some degree over the next 24 months. I have some guarded optimism though, because I think the metro Phoenix market in 80s and 90s were inundated with customer service centers. We were a back office, really a back office supercenter for a lot of corporate America. Those I don't see necessarily coming back, they were the way they were prior to COVID. I think you're going to have still combinations of remote works. When you pick up the phone and call your State Farm agent or your Discover card, or even your AMX, or your, your financial advisor, oftentimes their back office hubs are going to stay remote, not be back in these large-scale centers like what we saw. However, I do think you'll see more shared services centers coming back, which again, higher wages anyway. So again, pretty balanced look at what's in our pipeline. You can see also on this slide where these companies reside from. California is just like TSMC, the gift that keeps on giving. Somewhat sad state of affairs on the regulatory and tax environment side in California. So we're still attracting a lot of manufacturing in the LA basin, and I think that's going to continue. My focus though with our team is high-wage jobs. It's about targeting very specific industries of the future. And we had a team in Korea last week working with 26 suppliers from LG, which expanded into the southeastern part of the valley and Queen Creek. And we're working with a number of their suppliers considering now the valley. So again, if you look at where our projects are coming from, they're all over the world now. If you rewind the tape, again, 15 years ago, 4% of our deal flow was international. We were irrelevant. Today, we're very relevant in the US GDP. And that's really what we all set out to do back then. So pretty exciting times. Mentioned Wendy's, Mindy mentioned GTI, that 500,000-square-foot expansion to the market here recently. So quickly, what's next? I left you a smattering of these, I should have just with the executive board last week. I'm not going to touch on all of them, but we think it's a really opportune time for greater Phoenix. We're now on the national map, the national stage. With the current administration, it's going to be, I think, a wild ride, so buckle up. But, you know, we are seeing President Trump announced, with the key executives from Apple, we're going to get more Apple investment into greater Phoenix. We're going to have more TSMC investment here in greater Phoenix. And there are other projects that are of national notoriety that I can't talk about, subject to nondisclosures, but we're in every major deal being cited across the US. Whether we win them, we don't know. But we have to have the right infrastructure, the right energy support, because energy's a big linchpin to our success. We've continued to enhance the labor supply, the quality of the labor supply through career technical education, the J-TEDs, the high schools, and, you know, obviously universities, community colleges. So that's when something I would argue we've overcome 15 years ago was this belief that there wasn't the talented labor in the market. That's not been an issue with the current companies evaluating the market. Now it's about, do you have the infrastructure for us to plug into, particularly energy infrastructure? And so we had a meeting with Ted from APS this week and Jim from SRP, and it's all about how do we make sure the energy grid, number one, stays resilient, because we can't have any kind of downtime in the summer. We can't have what some of these other markets have experienced in rolling blackouts or brownouts. That would be catastrophic for our community. And at the same time, we have to continue to make sure we can fulfill the needs of these companies, because they are down-selecting based upon power supply and redundancy of the grid. In addition to that, we're tomorrow, is it tomorrow, Wednesday? I think it's tomorrow, or it's Wednesday, excuse me. We're hosting the EPA. Yeah, EPA, yeah, so this is Wednesday, not tomorrow. EPA Administrator will be here to talk about the Clean Air Act and, I don't know if that's public, so, I don't know, but he's going to be here. And we're going to talk about the Clean Air Act and specifically the moderate to serious non-attainment shift that we were all expecting, because that will have implications for evolved organic compounds, ozone limitations relative to our attraction and retention of current base industries. So that's a big deal. So a lot of what GPEC does behind the scenes that people don't see as much, we love cutting ribbons, as you know. We love when you cut ribbons. But a lot of our technical work is making sure we're ahead of that next curve. So when these industries like energy storage devices, or, you know, so batteries and/or EV growth happens in the US, or semiconductors, we were talking about a semiconductor roadmap back in 2015. We've had 40 companies make announcements since 2020 to invest here. So I almost, I almost posted checkmate a couple, a couple of weeks ago when TSMC and Intel continued their announcements, but we decided not to do that. We have won the semiconductor race in Arizona compared to other states, so we're excited about that. But there are other arenas we think are on the near-term future, AI, quantum computing, these other sectors. We want to make sure Arizona and really metro Phoenix are well-positioned to take advantage of some of these new supersectors that are going to evolve. So with that, those are a handful of things that we're working on as, as it stands today. Trying to think if there's anything else I want to cover. The brand piece, earned media, for those of you that like PR, positive PR, we're going to unleash something in the next 60 to 90 days, which will be the most significant thing I've probably done at GPEC. That's how, that's how excited I am about it. It's a new way to tell our story. There's so many, there's so much excitement about our community here, and yet, I had two, and I'll leave you with this, I had two international delegations, one from Dubai and one from Japan here in the last month. Both of them left and we did our debrief and they said, yeah, Chris, the one thing about the region that may or may not be shocking to you is that this is the most untold story of any other market we've experienced in the US. And they said, who does your branding work and messaging work? And I'm like, well, that's what we do. So obviously, we need to be doing more in that regard, and you'll see, this is going to be a privately funded effort to take us to the national level on the PR front. So stay tuned on that front. So with that, to close, kind of very hyper-specifically on the Goodyear investment, you see that your contribution, and again, for those of you that are new to council, there's a flat rate that each community, we ask each community to pay on a per capita basis. That goes into the public side of what GPEC requests. We have standardized contracts with each of your councils that we are very explicit in how we perform for your communities. And then those dollars, the $54,000 as you see there, we run a third-party analytics group called InPlan that measures the type of investments being created through the support of the companies that locates that we affect or impact. And these input-output systems drive the kind of return for your community. So that's, these aren't GPEC numbers cooking, cooking the books. These are very clear third-party reviews of the dollars being invested versus the dollars being generated in new tax revenue. So that's where you see, you might have the highest return. I think it's you and Tolleson. Tim will correct me if that's incorrect, but I think it's those two. Yeah. So you also see the, the kind of locates we've had in the region, 17 of those landing in Goodyear over the last five years. You see the 5,000 job clip, just under $2 billion in capital investment. So as you can see here, I'm not going to go through all of them, but we're metriced and measured by new payroll-generated total jobs, high-wage jobs, average salary in total, quality prospects or qualified prospects that are added, assisted locates that land in the region in the total capital investment. And again, if we included TSMC, this would skew all the numbers, so that's why we don't include the ongoing levels, even though sometimes I wish we could. Community leadership, you see the representation. This is one of the most integrated councils that we have, being participatory in the work that we do. We have an ambassador network, as you can see, with very active councilmen and women, mayors and supervisors, council, mayor serves on that. Economic Development Director's team, as you can see, is very integrated with our monthly meetings that we have, where we troubleshoot opportunities and challenges together. And Kevin Tulipana is the representative from City of Hope, that's on the executive board. So with that, just final item, looking ahead, we, we built a three-year strategic plan, which has three goals, very kind of macro-level goals. We want us, our region to be internationally recognized as a lead market for high-value, high-impact industries. Our second goal is that we want to make sure we're positioning the market for future-forward or future-facing sectors, so I spend a lot of my time on that. And then third, making sure GPEC has maintained its, its top-leading position as one, if not the leading economic development organization in the country. And we've been that for the last several years, and in part because of our, in large part, our city and county and private sector coordination and leadership. So with that, I won't leave my big mug up there, but if you have any questions, thoughts, I'd be happy to entertain them. And sorry I rented that so quickly, but I can hear my stomach growling for that Rudy, so. With that, thank you, Mayor and Council for the time today.
I just got two quick questions for you. With the geopolitical, with Taiwan and whatever, do you see more businesses leaving Taiwan to try to maybe get a foothold in the United States? And the second, your own personal opinion, tariffs, how do you think that might hit possibly more manufacturing, more investment coming back into the United States?
Yeah, Mayor, two great questions. So first, Taiwan, it's been, it's been made very clear that the central government of China intends to reunify under a one-China market model by 2027. So Xi Jinping's been very clear about that. The Taiwanese were already shifting their advanced technology assets to the US to feed their customer demands, so that was already in process. I just think this will continue to continue. I just think this will continue to accelerate through '26 and '27, or '25, '26. As it relates to your second question, tariffs are an interesting one. I think under this administration, they're using tariffs very punitively to try to curb or change behavior of these countries. And I also think the president has a very clear view that, in his view, we've been taken advantage of as a country. I won't speak for him and the total policy platform, but I will say that what it's done is really two things. It will begin, I think, to induce companies to get closer to their customer, and many of which will be, you know, cited in the US. I'm personally hopeful that we don't disregard the value that Canada and Mexico play as allies and certainly aligned manufacturing hubs. If you look at Mexico in particular, you have tremendously advanced supply chains in things like automotive, electrical supply, there's a lot, and even aerospace. There's a lot of back and forth of products, goods that are moved across the border until they're finally produced in the US and then shipped to final customers. So I'd hate to throw the baby out with the bathwater and the years of relationship we've had since NAFTA with Mexico and Canada specifically. So I think it's going to be short-term waves. But in the long term, I do think the blueprint will work. And I do think we will see tremendous levels of advanced manufacturing back in the US. I'm probably more concerned about the workforce being prepared for this massive shift in making goods again. So we've kind of relinquished that as a country for 40 years through globalization. As that returns, I think we're going to have to really focus, and hence why we've been so integrated with our community colleges, our high school academies. I think this shift is not going to just occur at universities. It's going to have to occur as a cultural shift with parents, students, earlier in the process, so we can get to making things again in the country.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, I appreciate all you guys do, GPEC, and the years that we've been participating with you guys. So I think at one point, we were one of the top places that all the GPEC locates went to, I think, one here or two. So I appreciate that as well. So, yeah, I'm excited for all that you're doing and all the potential that might be coming to Arizona. So a lot of your guys' hard work. And I also make sure, I guess the question is, are we, anything we can do? I'm sure, I know you're working with the executive team, with Wendy. Is there anything that we can do to try to attract some of the higher-wage jobs here? Or those new sectors, or anything as a council we can do to try to, I don't know, greenfield or prep different areas for that, or incentivize or help with those kind of things? I know we were close to having a chip manufacturer here at one point. So that particular land would be great to have something high-end, high-wage-type careers here in Goodyear. So I'm just curious, is there anything we can do that we're not already doing?
Yeah. Mayor and Councilman, a very quick response, because I think you're doing a lot of the things you need to be doing. I mean, really, being focused on quality of life, balancing, you know, planning and zoning to ensure that you're maintaining a very high quality of life in this community, I think is number one. Two is the shovel readiness and nature of your sites you have remaining to make sure that it is so, is getting so competitive, not just interregionally, but nationally with taking away risk from companies. So one, you have to have a community that's willing to work with companies and making sure staying pro-business really matters. But even solving for the kinds of water, wastewater, power consumption, doing that in advance, making sure you're ready for when those clients do get active. Today, it's about risk aversion. And if you're adding any elements of risk, you're going to get knocked off the list. That's just a normalized activity now. And so I think, you know, and the team does that really well, but I think making sure you're ready there. I'd also say with, working with the capital markets community, making sure you have the development stock, so the buildings that, whenever we go vertical with buildings, like we have this last year across the region, we land more projects, because you're eliminating some of that site readiness risk when you have the buildings compatible with operational use that the companies have. So that's really important. And then I would say just your coordination with the schools, your coordination, you know, with, you know, areas like Westmeck and all the, I said this earlier, but C-Teds and J-Teds, like, that is a formula that's really, really important for the technical labor supply. Engineers get a lot of focus. Office work gets a lot of focus. I will just tell you, like, the intense focus on operators, on, you know, parts of the supply chain, just in the sheer mechanical, the trades, that's all in demand right now. So I would say those are the four or five things I'd recommend. But the team here, we were so integrated on what the industry supply requires, and then they work with us very closely on the preparation with the community.
No, I appreciate that. I've just, yeah, just drawn up, it'd be great to have a huge, huge, high-wage employer here, like, when these new AI or Apple decides to come here, and we get a huge footprint of that, that'd be, those things would be great for our city. So just trying to advocate for that and try to figure out whatever we can do to make it as easy as possible for those kind of larger employers, high-wage employers to come to Goodyear would be great for our city.
It'd be amazing if we're sitting here next to you talking about the one that's happening around the corner.
Exactly.
We'll keep working on that.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Laura.
Well, I'm one of your ambassadors, and I really do like the program. I think Wally is too. Yeah, she's probably been a founding member of the ambassador program. And I hope that our new council members will have the opportunity to learn about it and be able to attend the webinars and things like that, because you offer a lot of good, quality things. I wanted to tell you that last week, when we were in DC for National League of Cities, and the EPA Administrator did talk with us. And he talked specifically about the challenges that we face here in Arizona, which was really encouraging, because this is a discussion we've had for a long time. And realizing that the one-size-fits-all across the nation standard isn't working. So I hope your conversations will be very, very fruitful when you get together. I've had the opportunity, Mayor has delegated to me, probably because I have a Japanese last name, but meeting with your Japanese consul, and they come out, and they come out pretty frequently. And so they have a lot of money to invest. And we're hoping certainly that we can attract them out, give them a chance to come out. Maybe when Buc-E's comes, it'll be a tourist attraction that'll finally get them out here. But, you know, I know we're doing what we can. Usually, when you come out, I ask you, what markets do we compare to? And I think in the past, it's been Dallas, Fort Worth, maybe Salt Lake City. But it seems that we've had a big, I don't know, maybe a status change with TSMC. It's changed everything. How, who do we compare with now, market-wise, across the nation?
Yeah, Mayor and Councilwoman, yeah, at this juncture, we're so globally in the game for all these advanced-technology projects. And what I see in the future, and I'm going to try to keep this concise, but I see supply chains being dramatically reset, meaning this has already started during COVID once people were trying to figure out how to get their goods into the US when we had, you know, ports had challenges and so forth. That reset, though, is really largely customer-driven and redundancy-driven. And so I think, as I look at competition, I think there's going to be three evolving major hubs or nodes around the world. One's going to be in Western Europe, certainly one's going to be in Southeast Asia, and one's going to be North America, as long as we stay aligned. I think that's really important. And then, you know, domestic markets today, it's still, if it's in office shared services headquarters, it's usually Dallas. And if it's an advanced manufacturing opportunity, the South has gotten really competitive. I won't bore you with all the details, but the incentives that they provide are exceedingly more aggressive than what we do. Now, that's good and bad, mostly bad. But it's challenging in that they went through a process during the EV run-up. There were a lot of what's called reverse merger SPACs, companies going public. When they provide the kind of upfront grants that they do at the state level, when those projects don't materialize, the taxpayers on the hook. And so the way, and 100% of ours are structured, they're performance-based, our economic development programs are performance-based. And it puts us in a position where I think in today's era, it's less about how much cash will you give me to go to location X and more about, does the totality of the ecosystem support my company or not? And incentives or economic development programs, as we call them, they're never going to make a good location or a bad location good. But it does have material impact sometimes, some projects, when they're billion-dollar projects. And so in that case, like Columbus winning a couple recently, Anduril, which is a venture-backed defense company, we weren't even close on the full economic package or the 10-year cost per forma, even though I wish, I think we had a very meritorious response. So in this case, it's now kind of the entirety of the country. I wouldn't have said that 10 years ago, because we weren't seeing the looks that we're seeing today. So the good news is the quality is much higher, but we're competing with the most aggressive places in the country now. And so we just got to be ready, and we do our song and dance. And, you know, we usually win, sometimes we don't. There's been three that we've lost in the last few years that still, I wake up at night and think about, could we have done something differently? But it is something, a little bit of the embarrassment of the riches. We've had a lot of success in the region. And when I talk to national consultants that are advising clients, companies, we're one of the top three places in the country they're talking about now.
Wonderful. Well, your 17 years of sowing into this area is really paying off, and I appreciate all the work that you and your team do.
Well, thank you.
Anything else? You good? Well, thanks, Chris. Appreciate all that you do, and I expect a lot of big things coming down the road. Wendy's going to make sure that happens, right, Wendy?
That's right.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
All right. With that, no further business, message, meeting, adjourned.